All right, recording is going. All right, and we have, you can see everybody, right? There you got it. Greg?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, guys, we will open this meeting of the Maynard Planning Board. It is Tuesday, October 27th, 7:02 PM, and we are with the full board minus Jim Coleman and Chris Arsenal at this time. So just a, just a quick note for everyone on the agenda for tonight. That item, excuse me, item four has been withdrawn, so we won't be discussing item four. And so we'll skip item two, we'll do minutes later and go right to item three, determination of major minor modification for 129 Parker Street.
Which was item four? Sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
Item four was also a major minor modification for 129 Parker Street, having to do with some curbing issues.
Oh, right, got it. Thanks.
Yep. So with that, Danny, I see you're with us. If you want to just give us a brief review of what you're asking for determination.
Okay, Danny Ruiz from Capital Group Properties. Bill, can you share the plan that goes along with this?
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, never mind. Bill Crenshaw, you're with us.
There we are.
Please, please.
All set?
All set, thank you.
Okay. So we're here today to request a determination of minor versus major on the relocation of the dumpster pad for R9. Currently, as you see on the plan, it is shown to be right next to the building. It's an 18 by 18 and a half concrete pad for the dumpster. We want to relocate it to the east side of the parking lot, right up against the property line near 141 Parker Street and 129. We want to change the dimensions to be 10 by 40. It's, we needed to accommodate more spacing for the protect, the future tenants that are coming into here. We have a liquor store, so they're going to need a lot of recycling. And we have the paper store who's also to be going into this building. 18, the 18 by 18 wasn't big enough to be, to accommodate all the recycling and the trash that's going to be coming out of there. So we wanted to make it bigger and relocate it. This also allows for an easier access for the trash truck, the garbage trucks. As you see in the red is where the garbage truck would typically go. And the purple would be the new, new point, which would allow the truck from not backing up towards the neighbor's house and the abutters, so that there's no noise going towards their homes. This would allow them to just go straight in, pull back up, and the noise would go towards Market Basket and then be able to leave this right along that road out the same way they came. That's, that's the presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Danny. We'll ask for some questions in a sec. I guess if Wayne is with us, Wayne, have you had a chance to review this modification proposal?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, what Danny stated seems reasonable. I understand why it can't be nestled into the building corner as previously proposed. And I believe that based on the site layout, that is, the proposed location is a reasonable, reasonable location for the relocation.
Thank you. So it's approximately the same footprint. Is that right? Just a different configuration?
So it's about 70 square feet bigger.
Right. So you said 18 by 18, changing to 10 by 40.
Correct.
And this is enclosed?
Yes, it will be.
Same as the previous proposal?
That is correct.
Just a different configuration.
Yep.
Bill, do we, have we, there's no issues with setbacks or anything? We're closer to the property line here on this end.
The, it's not a structure. That was the thing we discussed in the setbacks for this. Okay, get a look at, not, were they? Let me take a deep You haven't tried to remember with it, with the dumpster, because we did it, was it? We had the, the change for for, let me look for a minute. I'll check that real quick.
Okay. Any other questions from the board at this time?
Do we have information on the enclosure?
So the details were in the original site plans that were approved, and the enclosure would be, we would follow the same details as to what was on the approved plans.
Could you give us like a verbal description? Do you, do you recall verbally?
Off of the top of my head, I don't recall the detail on that.
If I, if I remember right, Mr. Chairman, talking to the, the site super recently, I think this is all vinyl fence enclosure. And just so everybody's aware, I think that the actual installation of the fence may be delayed a little bit, because I believe that, well, on several sides of the site and several areas on the site, white vinyl fences used. I believe that it's a tan or a green. Danny, does that sound right?
That is correct.
Yeah, that they're using, and I believe that stuff's been backordered for a while. Tony from JBJ has been waiting for that for several other dumpster tad, dumpster pads, R4, R5, the dumpsters are sitting there, but they can't get them enclosed. The Dunkin' Donuts, if anyone's gone there, it's not going to look like that. The dumpster is just sitting on the pad right now. It's going to have it in closure, but it doesn't right now because they're waiting for the material. It's on backorder.
But yeah, there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of issues with COVID and specific colors of vinyl fencing. The, they've been mass producing the white ones and the, the different one that we're using for the trash enclosures have been backordered. So we're still, we're still waiting on those.
How, how was the original dumpster accessed? They have to go outside to get to it, or was it accessed from the inside?
No, they would have to go outside.
So yeah, that's, the exhibit you're showing doesn't show the footprint of the building quite, at least.
I'm not sure why that's like that. Sorry about that.
But, but just to clarify, the approved design had a freestanding enclosure and dumpster. And I think, like you just mentioned, there was no access from the interior of the building to that dumpster.
That's correct.
Other questions from the board?
None from me.
Any questions from the public?
Hi, it's Trish. I have two questions.
Yes, please.
My first question is, how many garbage and how many recycling receptacles will be on the pad? And my second question is, are there any mechanical trash or recycling compactors as part of this?
So for the first one, we don't know exactly how many there will be. It's going to depend on how much recycling the liquor store is going to need. But most likely it will be one trash for each tenant and then two, one or two recycling for each tenant. And then there will not be any mechanical compacting.
Greg, I get.
I'm sorry, guys. Please go ahead.
Yeah. Are the proposed dumpsters dedicated to tenants? Does that mean they're, they might have different companies picking them up at different times? Theoretically, if there's four dumpsters, four different pickups?
No, that'll be, so that's done by the property management, which we will be handling. That's part of the O and M plan. It'll all be done by the same company.
So there'd be a trash pickup and then there'd be a recycling pickup?
That's correct.
But a single truck might pick up two dumpsters at once or something?
Yes.
And Danny, is there any way to limit the number of dumpsters? Just have a fewer, bigger receptacles so they can get in and out faster?
We can definitely talk, talk about that. We can look into getting maybe bigger, bigger dumpster pad and a bigger recycling bin. That way, it's just one for each, but I'll have to talk to the property management about that.
Thank you. Just because the way they slam those things around is very noisy. So
I totally understand.
One rather than three smaller ones, that feels a lot less intrusive. Thank you.
I'll, I'll definitely talk to property management about that.
And what's the calculation of how much closer the dumpsters are now to the residential setback?
I don't have a, an exact measurement of that, but that dash line that you see on the plan is the 100-foot buffer from any residential. Oh. Oops. The plan just went away.
Did it?
There, there it is. Yeah. So the dash line that you see just to the south of the building, that is the 100-foot buffer that we had to respect for any buildings of the, from residential. So it's probably 150 feet.
Other questions?
I have, what's going to happen with the previous pad location is that, you know, the, that driving line?
Yeah, that, that'll just end up being landscape.
So you're going to maintain the curbs the way they're drawn in this plan?
So right now, the curbing is done that way. The way it was, it is out there is, instead of where the concrete pad would go in, we just went across with granite. And then that whole area will just end up being all landscaped like it originally, well, like the rest of it was.
Got it. So you're halfway done building this and you built it according to this drawing and, and you're going to leave it that way? Minus the dumpster pad itself.
Correct.
What was supposed to be in the place of the new location? Trees or just grass?
Nothing. No, it's just grass.
And is there any impact on lighting as a result of this move?
No.
Okay, any other questions from the public? All right, any final discussion from the board?
So can you just clarify that if this proceeds, they're gonna have it in operation without a screen for a while? Was that correct? Because they can't get the correct plastic.
Um, so I don't know what the timing is for.
Wouldn't that be the same for whatever location it was, though?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Wouldn't the issue with the screening be the same in either location?
Yeah, correct. I don't know the exact timing on when that's supposed to come in. I can talk with the site supervisor, Tony, and see what's, what they're telling him for timing, but it would be the same as if it was in the original approved area.
Hey Danny, question. What's your, I think we may be jumping the gun. What's your tentative date on occupancy for R9 anyhow, right? You don't even have one.
Yeah, no, not yet.
So just, I just wanted the board to be aware of that. So that, that dumpster is not going to be used in the, in the near future anyhow.
Correct.
Hopefully, we can get, they can get the fence, you know.
And what would be the timeline for determining options for larger and fewer dumpsters? Answer that question.
So what I can do is, I can go back and talk with property management this week and then try to get back to Wayne and Bill and let, give them an update on that for next week.
All right, with that, I would like to move that the proposed change constitutes a minor modification to the plan.
Second.
There's Greg and Andrew.
That's right. All in favor? Andrew?
Aye.
Bill?
No.
Natalie?
My voting?
Yes, you are.
Sorry, I thought that there were. Sorry. Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion carries three to one. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Sorry, Natalie. Yeah, we are, we're missing two, so we're, we need you.
Okay, is, do you know if they're coming? Because I, I
Yeah, I don't. We're gonna
Chris.
I think we can move, we can do it with three, I think, right?
We, you can't do the planning board rules and regs.
Not that, but we could do the, the next determination.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Natalie, why don't you just hang with us as long as you can? And if you gotta go, then you gotta go.
Thanks.
Okay, guys, so we'll move on to item five on the agenda, determination of major minor modification for 42 Summer Street regarding the screening of rooftop mechanical equipment. Hello, McDonald Development, are you guys with us?
Yes.
Here.
Hello.
Hello, yes. Can you, could you give us a quick summary of your proposal?
Wayne, gonna screen the rooftop units with a vinyl material. It's like about lattice work, and it's going to be three feet, it's going to be three inches off the roof for a total of 39 inches high. And it's going to cover the pipes that are sticking out and any air conditioning units. And yes, we have a drawing there that the architect drew up.
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna share it. I'll share it.
Okay.
Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Uh, could you maybe zoom in a little bit, Bill? It's kind of showing up like a little dark, which I think is just because we're zoomed out quite so far.
Um, let's see. Let me try something. Why would that be?
Still magnifying glass on the left, upper left.
I'm looking. You do not, there is, but it's making, it's going the other way. Maybe it's, oh, well, no, it's because it's small to you guys?
Yeah.
Well, it's showing up as black pretty much, but it, we are proposing a white.
Can you, can you use your wheel on your mouse and scroll in?
Where you're off and
Yeah, hit, hit control and then spin the wheel. Like, yeah.
Can you guys, is that it? Because
Yeah, it's working.
Because mine is spilling off the screen, but you guys can see it?
Yes.
I think that's just going to have to be how it is so people can see it.
Okay.
And there was a detail as well on the side, I think.
Scroll down to the low left. I don't know if you can or not with the mouse device you have.
Is there a frame system that holds this thing in place?
Yes, you see where it says white vinyl posts? That post comes up. And
It's a post-to-post system, but there's no railing on the top of it.
Every four feet, it has a post.
But it's not open on the top either. Like, it's, it's flat across the top.
Right, but there's no, there's no horizontal rails or anything. They're trying to bind this thing together. Okay, so then a single piece of, a single piece will span from post to post, I assume?
Yes, this comes in eight-foot-long sheets, four feet. It'll be cut down to 36 inches.
So every four feet, there'll be a post.
So the eight feet will have two posts. Every four feet will be a post.
Jimmy Jackie, did you get my note for about, from Rick that was about snow storage? Could, did you?
Yeah, he was a little concerned about snow.
Can you address that a little bit?
Well, Rick was a little concerned if it would build up with snow. That's I mean, it's, every place is different, depends how the wind hits it.
The reason we didn't use a solid fence was partially for that exact concern. It's also going to be three inches off of the ground to allow for any leaves or anything to flow through along with rain, so nothing catches in there. If there's ever going to be snow that's more than three feet, we typically have to visit the roofs of our current properties anyway. And all of our properties have AC on the top. Well, our apartment buildings have AC on the top and, and vents. So we have to, that's part of our maintenance plan for all of our properties. So we don't really see this being a concern for us. It's in terms of, out of anything normal, like abnormal. But that is why we went with the type of fence we went with and kept it off the roof by three inches. And the railing is not going to be like right up against the pipes either. There's going to be a distance. They're all in different places, so the distance will vary. But there's going to be no pipe touching any of this fence, so we don't have to worry about the snow building up like right next to it. We don't really foresee it as being too much of an issue, though.
Can we get the picture showing the pipes that's in the board docs? Can you get that on screen? Just curious if the fence will cover all the pipes or there'll be a couple outliers.
Well, Bill's pulling that up. I have a question for the applicant. I'm assuming the height of those vent pipes were per building and plumbing code?
Yes, the, some of them pipes that are too tall, I believe they've been already cut down. I can't honestly say that. The ones that look like a candy cane, they're at the right height.
Those are the highest ones.
They have to stay at that height because of the, you know, that's the requirement. Some of the ones that are straight up are going to be cut, either are cut or going to be cut down.
Thank you.
And when the, this screen goes around, there's going to be, you can see three of them there on your left side. They will be outside the screen. There's a couple more on the back that are going to be outside the screen. That I'm not sure if it's, you know, how to adjust that, be like black more than white.
We could, we were thinking maybe we could spray, or we could paint them black or a dark gray.
You know, I'd like to talk about that, the whole thing. My first thought was that, you know, the point of the screen is to, you know, sort of screen visually like all the white pipes and a big white blob of fencing to me catches the eye just as much. And I was wondering if it'd be possible to match the color of the roof. Because I think that would be an interesting option.
In other words, don't have it white, but have the, have the lattice black or
Yeah, have it match the color of the shingles or as, you know, near as might be possible. As you know, I feel like there's a mass of white pipes, which, you know, you want, that's what you want to screen, and screening it with even more white, I don't know, it didn't, it didn't register with me.
I agree.
Yeah, we're open for that, but if somebody wants to think we want a different color.
I mean, the solution is straightforward. I just, that was my only curiosity.
Yeah.
You may want to just verify that they actually make that PVC in gray or black. I'm not sure.
I don't think they will, would have to paint.
We would have to paint them. I'm pretty sure.
You definitely couldn't get it now because of the virus. You can get white without the painted.
Just a comment for the board's consideration. Well, what the applicant is proposing is certainly reasonable as far as painting the PVC. You got to use the right, right paint, and I'm sure they would. Because if you don't, it's going to peel and then it's going to look really awful.
Yeah, yeah, we totally agree.
We had originally thought about, instead of using a fencing system or a screening system at all, just painting the pipes that color.
Black?
Yeah, black or the, the dark, dark gray color of the roof, which we're not opposed to doing either. We just came with a proposal that would require architecture drawings and all of this. We thought you'd want to go that way, but we're, we're totally open to painting the pipes themselves as well.
I have another question. Sorry, maybe it shows it on the architectural plan and I didn't notice. Is this, is there a flat section of the roof up here or is this on the peak? And how, where is the, where is the fence actually going to be attached?
On the flat section.
There's a flat section on the roof. It's the whole section that the pipes are on, except for the few outliers.
Okay. So the, this, the pipes would technically be surrounded on like all four sides? Is that, is that the intent? Okay, yes, thank you.
So, you know, to your point, Jack, unless there's a technical reason why we want it to be screened or fenced in, you know, I'd, I'd be interested in discussing the idea of, of coloring the pipes, because if there's, you know, I think less random vinyl, the better, really.
Yeah.
You know, but there, but I'm full, well, there may be a reason that's a bad idea, but I look to my colleagues and Wayne for comment on that.
Andrew asked a question again, please.
Whether or not the, I'm intrigued by Jackie's comment about painting the pipes rather than putting up additional vinyl screening. You know, to me, that would obscure the, you know, sort of visual draw, the visual clash of those pipes. And in my mind, you know, using less vinyl or less plastic in any event is always a positive.
Yeah. You know, I'll defer to the board on this. You know, these, I understand the comment about the, the pipes in general, but you know, it didn't, it didn't come from me.
No, I'm just asking if you think that's a bad idea for any tactical reason?
To paint it, as long as they, they use some PVC paint that
To forego this, to forego the fencing.
Yeah.
And have just the pipes be painted.
Well, yes, I'm sorry. I, I'm clear on that. Yeah, I mean, as long as they use the appropriate paint, there's nothing wrong with that solution. I mean, Jimmy and Jackie, I guess I'm asking, these are all high-efficiency units, I guess, right? That's why you've got this. So these, these pipes don't really get hot. They get warm and that's it, if that.
Yeah.
So that would be fine from a technical standpoint, as long as the appropriate paint was used.
Do you think that, I think that would be more agreeable for the Rick's concern. I, I don't, I think.
I like it from every angle I can think of. So I would be in favor of that solution. And to top it off, it's probably also cheaper.
My feeling is that if you put any color, well, except white of a fence up there, you're going to see the white pipes through it, no matter what you do. So I feel like at a minimum, the pipes have to be colored some, you know, and, and if, if that's the case, then do you really need a fence? I kind of feel personally that the fence detail is a little flimsy, concerned about it lasting. So I think I'd be more inclined to to look at the just simply coloring the pipes themselves after they're cut down to minimum height. I'd also like to I'd also like to, you know, I don't know, just raise the, the point about revisiting this in a year. And just keeping an eye on this because I'm, and I, I guess I would say that more if, if we had, uh, if we, if we did go with, with a, a fence enclosure. Just for, for the, the main reason that I'm, I'm just not sold on the idea that it's, that that detail would last. Um, so that might not be as much of a concern if, um, we are just talking about painting the pipes. Um, so what I'm curious to see what other folks think.
I'm fine with painting the pipes, although I kind of like, I'm painting it like candy cane, it would be fun.
We thought about that. We didn't want to present that, keep in mind, but we did think about doing that.
Jackie?
Yeah.
Can you please not do that?
I'm just gonna do one, just for Bill.
Natalie still with us or you are, but I don't know if you're recused from this one or not, but.
I don't know either, but I think painting them, I think if they're not white, I'm on board, so.
Right, even if you can't vote, you can still comment.
Yes, that's my comment. Non-white option.
Candy cane?
Only on my side.
The pipes are one thing, we, there is also equipment up there too. How many units or how many, uh, you know, actual HVAC units are, are up there?
Twenty-four.
And can they take this, you know, can they be treated with the same paint?
Yes.
Yeah, we can.
They're a lot, they're like a.
They're already kind of a gray color, but we can match them to the paint that we put on the, on the vents pipes.
My preference would be not for black, but for like a charcoal, like, you know, closer to the roof color. I think a true black is gonna not work.
Yeah.
Ash the shingle as close as possible.
Yeah. We agree.
Jackie, I, I take back what I said, you can paint one pipe as a candy cane for Natalie, so she can see it. It'll be like Christmas all year round, right?
You know, we have to know.
I'll tell you, if you did that, that'd be the kind of thing some kid will remember, like, you know.
Forever, yes.
Any other comments, comments from the public? Questions?
So Greg, I got a question, what do we do with the, this, um, item if we're now talking about painting, I assume they don't need permission one way or another to paint? At least those things anyway.
Not really a modification, I suppose.
It depends on what the drawings look like on the final decision, what it showed for the roof condition, but I would.
I don't think it had anything.
Oh, if it didn't have anything, even if it showed a fence and we're removing it, I, I would still consider that minor because you're sort of retreating from the total scope rather than adding to.
The original drawing didn't show a fence on the top.
Do we, do we need to make a finding then?
Right, I guess, I, I think it's just withdrawn as long as the, uh, as long as the applicant is, um, gonna move forward with the suggestions that we're, that we laid out, I think, right, Bill?
Um, I, I think probably it would be best just to have a, a, a finding of a minor or, you know, just to keep.
Just for Ponzi's?
Just, yeah, cause I like to type, um.
Is it a finding of minor as modified?
I would think so, just give it minor because it, um, yeah, that, that makes it neat, makes it neat for Jimmy and Jackie too, it's like, um, and, um, I don't, I mean.
Okay, well, that's fine, I don't.
It doesn't hurt.
Doesn't hurt, all right, well, I would like to move that we find the proposed change as amended in this conversation, a minor modification.
Second.
All in favor, Andrew?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Do we need to ask Natalie to vote here? I, I think maybe it'd be better if she didn't.
She doesn't need to, cause this isn't a public hearing, so.
Yeah, all right, we'll, we'll leave it at that. All right, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Fifty gray pipes and one candy cane.
Thanks Natalie, I just, just to keep that one clean, uh.
No, no, I, I would, I prefer that, thank you, so.
Let's do minutes.
Okay. I wonder what happened to Jim, I'm a little worried, Justin today. Um, I'm sorry, let's see, uh.
The minutes from October thirteenth.
We have minutes from October thirteenth, I think they're on there, yes, uh.
This, Bill, just so you know, you're still sharing your screen.
We could see that.
Well, it's, it's a nice screen.
Guys, I'm dropping off, I don't think you need me for anything else.
Come on, Wayne.
Thanks, Wayne.
Hang on for minutes.
Have a great night, guys.
Great.
Thanks, Greg, I appreciate the offer.
Take care.
Bye.
Uh, who's doing our minutes these days?
Val, Val's back to doing them.
She's back, all right, I was gonna say, this is.
She was, she was, um, wait, I told you, I don't know if I did tell you guys, but we got, we got hijacked down here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um.
What do you mean?
Well, we.
Someone held you at gunpoint and forced you to go somewhere else?
Well, not us, but.
No, I'm not allowed out of here, um, it's, um, they, um, the clerk left and our office assistant who are just getting up to speed as seems to be the, like, pattern here, then says, oh, they have, they're good, trained up perfectly, boom, to another department. In this case, she applied for the clerk's position, so they wanted to kind of give her a, 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 you know, a, a, some experience there. And with the elections, it's bonkers here. And, um, so anyway, so Megan, who's, I have to hand it to her for this one, very resourceful, did find a former intern of hers from Lexington, just happened to be, have a background in community development and was just getting out of college. And so we got her, reeled her in here, but we're starting from scratch with her, but. So anyway, yes, Val's doing it.
Okay, uh, a move that we approved the minutes from October thirteenth.
Second.
All in favor, my voice, aye.
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 Ready?
Okay, so. We have our, um, I don't know how you wanna do with board, I mean, with the, um, rules and regs. We made some changes.
We can't really open a public hearing, right? I guess.
We can, has Bill, does the Bills leave?
No, no, he's not on camera, but.
There is, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So we, we have four, so we can, we can do it. Or we can look at them anyway and just talk about what we're trying to do.
Let's talk about it for a few minutes and see, see if we wanna, I, I mean, I'm a little hesitant to do this without a full board, um, but we could certainly talk about it for.
Well, can I, you know, my big thing that I, I have to get straight with them, um, and we tried to address that in this, and my big thing is, um, the predictability of the peer review and how we do it, and, um, I, they tried to dress it as best I could, and, um, just the idea that we have that the board is, if they want a peer reviewer of something, the board, that's what the board gets. But if, um, we just have to have some sort of checks, you know, and stuff, so that, you know, I, and I think I, we came up with something pretty good in, in the, um, in the draft, uh, I can pull it over, I mean, you guys get what I'm saying, right?
Well, we, we talked about this once.
Yeah, we did.
That's what you ended up drafting up, Bill.
Right, okay.
But, uh, my memory is that.
We're all on the same page.
Just that basically we, we think that, or I think at least, I'll just speak for myself, that, um, at the outset of a peer, of a design review, I don't know if Wayne does this or not, but for peer review, we asked for a proposal. And, you know, basically a, a not to exceed number and, uh, you know, that the, the peer reviewer just provides kind of like a weekly summary of hours spent and, and kind of barely track that, and when we get close to the amount, um, I guess we just have to notify the applicant and, and it's, but it's gotta be, there's gotta be a rationale for why, you know, it's taken longer than what was anticipated. And, you know, I would say generally that the not to exceed number should be somewhat conservative, a little contingency in there. But, um, like, you know, I want to, wanna be able to give the peer reviewers the latitude to, um, to respond to things that come up, questions, requests for phone calls, et cetera, from anyone. Uh, and not just simply provide a, uh, you know, a pure fix fee, um, for doing the peer review, otherwise they'll just be, they, they will feel like they don't have any latitude to go above and beyond what their, what their basic duties are. So I think some kind, some modest amount of latitude is appropriate, but not a blank check, obviously.
Right.
Then we can give, you know, that basically the, um, the applicant sees the proposal and I guess agrees to it. And, um, you know, that there's just good transparency and communication about how the money is spent during the course of the peer review.
If we had, for example, if we had a project, just a, a, a normal project, we had those, right? And, um, if we had a normal project and with Wayne's, he's about, you know, a, a five thousand dollar deposit usually covered it all, didn't it, Katie? For like the regular stuff?
So something, something relatively simple, yes, um, you know, I've noticed it's kind of closer to six or seven thousand, um, yeah, on average, usually the, the very small projects are under five. But it's probably closer to like six or seven right now.
And, and, and to Greg's point, because I, I get their position totally, if, you know, and, and you know, this is true. We're, we're getting pushed by a lot of these, these, um, you know, applicants, they wanna get it done. And as long as they know they're gonna incur additional fees, that's fine. Um, but that's when it's, if, let's say they've already gone beyond the initial deposit. All I wanna do is just make sure they know, you know, if you're gonna, you're gonna have to incur some additional fees. Or if, you know, to get this reviewed, or if you guys want something specific that, you know, you guys say, okay, I want a reviewer to, to look at this. And then it's not just like, oh, Bill's, you know, just letting them run, run amok. And not that they are, but, but I, I just need to keep it tight. So, um, i- if you guys are, are, in general, good with this approach, maybe Katie, we could drop a, um, I don't, I don't wanna vote on it tonight, if like Greg doesn't want to either, if anybody else is here, maybe we could drop a, um, this is not the week to do it, but maybe in the next couple weeks, we could drop a, a, a process that we could bring to the board, because I wanna redo the, the, the costs anyway and have them vote on the costs too.
Yeah, that's, that's certainly doable, yeah, definitely not this week, but probably next.
Where I think about, yeah, this update was remove Bill and Katie's headaches in a lot of ways, and it, and it will, um, but, um, anyway, so that's all, that's just what I was saying with that. Oh.
So Bill, what are you proposing on the other sections? I mean, there's, there's some of this we have not yet.
Right.
Reviewed.
Yeah, uh, changed since the last time, um, that, last time that we all went through it, I, um.
No, I think, I mean, there, I think there's parts that we haven't even started to go through.
Well, let's, shall we run, wanna run through just from this top? Should. Um.
Pop top?
Well, let's skip through the stuff we've already talked about, we just talked about peer review, right, so let's.
All right. This was a good one, I, I, I can't remember if we all talked about that or if it was just a couple of us, but, you know.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, that's a good one.
I did add in one piece under utilities, because, um, just saying that, you know, any stormwater needs to, um, you know, be approved by Conscom and has to follow the stormwater management permit procedure and bylaws. As, you know, any, any special permit or site plan requires that. I just figured it'd be good to have the connection between here and the Conscom, um, piece. It's a lot of times we get people who say, you know, I didn't realize we had to do that too, so.
Um, so, but, okay, so we did the, um, we, we did this, cause this was the complete streets, how we wanted the demonstration and the other, you know, the, one thing I, I don't understand, and I hope this, this, um, makes it clear for applicants, but like, a, a perfect example is the design review. I wanna make it clear that it's not a question of having the board design the project, that's not what we're asking, sometimes you, we, we don't ask for that, we, we ask them to tell us how it meets or is consistent with our design standards and they're listed there. So by having a narrative with it of sort, you know, may, maybe, maybe there's something that nobody even thought of in an architectural feature that's not even addressed in here and it works, you know, anyway, that, that was one thing I hope would be made a little easier, I don't know that we didn't get through this, Bill. Ooh, look at that. I must have been on fire in this section.
This was Jim's continuance.
Sorry, is there an issue on this for the, um, for the co-op? We need to get this, some of this stuff buttoned up before they get started or they apply or? Before they launch peer review, I mean, maybe not necessarily formalizing changes to the rules and regs, but rather just kind of a consensus on how it should be handled and, and what kind of a process we should, you know, in other words, that we should get a proposal from Tim.
Oh, yes.
Get it cleared with the, uh, with the applicant and, uh, before we initiate that peer review.
Well, the, the, right now, there's, the, the issue, um, that we wanna get from Tim is from the AG. They, they just want a letter from, um, the town administrator saying that, you know, they're okay with him doing the review. But at this point, I think that they, they have some initial plans, but I don't know. You know, they, uh, Tim wants to meet with them and I think he should, you know, but I was hoping that he would kind of do it before they went too far on the designs.
The, the applicant mentioned today that I think they're, wanna meet with Tim next week. They actually have provided, even though they have not submitted anything yet, um, to the planning board, they have, um, provided peer review fees for both engineering and design. And, um, they, they're meeting next week, I think they already have a decent amount of stuff drawn, um, up. Um, they haven't sent us any of the renderings yet, I don't believe, um, but I will also mention that I think they wanna come in front of you guys on the tenth just to show their concept, like their general concept and get feedback.
Hey, Jim.
How are you, Bill?
Were you on or did you just pop on now?
No, I just came back on.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so the town would be okay if we brought them in for an update, is that, that's what they wanted, Katie, right, was an update for the guys?
Yeah, they just wanna like throw out their con, their, like, what they have for a site plan thus far, just to get some initial feedback.
That's informal. That's informal, though.
Yep.
Jeans allowed.
No jacket required.
What's going to happen with people being co-op members?
No problem.
We've got a, we've got a um, a form, you know, that people can sign, a disclosure form if need be. But I think it's really only if you have like a, if, if you're like a shareholder.
Well, aren't you that, if you're a member somehow?
I think there's, there's two different types of memberships, I think, or.
Different types of shareholders and like, because Leslie had to recuse herself on the, she thought, she didn't have to, but she felt that she was at a, she's on. She's entrenched with it more and she has a significantly higher interest in the co-op.
And so especially right now, as people are taking out, you know, the, the, the loans to help fund the co-op. I think then they especially are affected. So uh, you know, if anyone did that, they'd have to sign the disclosure, which I think Leslie did as well, so.
Guys, I don't, I'm a little nervous about informal uh, appearances, to be honest. I don't know that it really, why don't they just submit? I mean, it just seems like the more we say during an informal process, the more can. Just bite us in the, in the rear end down the road and, you know, kind of outside of a formal process and and it just seems a little like.
Question is, what's the goal, right?
Why? Why don't they just submit?
Well, I think the guy, I think there's two reasons for that. First of all, if they, in my opinion, the way it would work. Most efficiently would be if they met with. The designer viewer before they did much of anything, so they had a general idea of what the town is looking for. Um, but I think the, the key is, and and you know, every developer is a little different, but the, but um. They are afraid of just going too far astray with the design. Now, I, I don't, my thinking, if the traffic is. You know, settled, um, that's a big part of it, probably, but. I, I, I think it's just a reassurance for them that, you know, it's not a, a catastrophe, but if, if the board doesn't. We could um, we could just say, you know, meet with Tim and and Tim tip, if. Tim was going to tell them what their, you know.
But the process seems the same, they're going to come in front of us, show us something, we're going to say we like it or not, it's the same whether they submit or not.
The other thing too, the other thing too to consider is that, you know, we've. In the past, in other very different circumstances, we've, you know, entertained. Proposals both informally and formally without complete applications, which we've, which we've sworn off, right? And, and you know, it's those complete applications that give us the opportunity to, to provide. Well-informed opinions.
Yes, we have also had projects that got pretty far along in the process, veering one direction. And when we said, this is not in the scope of what we're looking for, they had to. Turn a completely different way, and I think that it's trying to find a sweet spot in there where you're not saying, yes, I like that, no, I don't like that, yes, I like that, but you know, just a general idea that like.
Right, yeah, Natalie's right. I, I think I, the whole goal, I believe, is that they. Because we're insisting on, we have to have a complete package and we've made this clear with them. So before they go, you know. Um, go all out, I think they just wanted to make sure they're on the, the right path. My thinking.
So it, is it, let me, Bill, so we, before they pay, like, because I'm sensitive to the fact that these people, you know, like, this is. What it is, like, so before they create all the final drawings and everything that would require for a package, they want like kind of a conceptual sign off? Or like, it's just a thumb up or like a, you know, you're not screwing up?
That's my thought. Um, and and it could probably get, you know, a lot if they were working with Tim. But it's, it's a, it's an odd site and some, you know, and there's going to be some issues.
But don't they get a lot of that just by the informal meeting with town staff? I mean, isn't that?
I mean, I, I met with them once myself and, and talked about the plan and, you know, didn't see any. Deal breakers that would, you know, I mean, there's de- details to be ironed out at that point, that was two months ago. But I don't know, I'm just nervous about like, you know, certainly any, you know, I would almost rather, you know. The conversation be limited to, you know, concerns only and and, you know, absent any kind of votes of. Any kind of endorsement, even conceptual of any kind.
Okay.
It just seems like.
It sounds like if they've already met with you, Greg, and you've given them some feedback and they've met with the staff and they've given them feedback.
Meet with us every week.
Then I don't actually see the need for.
You know.
Greg's original point, think it's time to submit then and start the process.
And I'll just say that in my review, which was two months ago, they are miles ahead of. Other proposals that, that I've experienced in the clarity, thoroughness, informed nature of the. Consultant team, et cetera, it's not going to be an issue uh, in, in terms of their ability to present us with a coherent proposal. So.
That's, they should just, you know, seize the bull by the horns, don't be afraid, let's go.
So would you, do you want them to just come in and address concerns or not come in at all?
Well.
They're going to meet with Tim.
Oh, yeah, I'll explain what, what I think. I think they should meet with Tim, I'm fine with that, as long as that. Constitutes the start of the design review process and Tim incurring time and that they, they understand that um. That that's what that's going to be. I think that's fine to do before they finalize their package. I just don't think they should come in front of the board and expect. You know, um. More thorough feedback than they've already received from staff, myself, et cetera. So I think, again, going with Tim, great, that they'll submit their package, it will have input from Tim already. Incorporated, and I think we're going to be well on our way to a um. A good, a good package of a project, so.
Okay.
Oh, Greg, can you clarify, though? I mean, isn't in the site plan pre-application meeting the option to have. The peer review in there for, you know, a relatively brief amount of time versus a formal analysis and. Written statement and actually starting the peer review process.
I think I, well, I, I think that this is an elective, I, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to prescribe that. Tim participates, I think that what I'm hearing is that they've asked for that and I support that. Uh, I think that I would not. Well, I, I don't necessarily think that. Okay, let's just play it out kind of chronologically. They meet with Tim next week, they submit the week after. And then in two weeks after that, they appear. I don't necessarily think that it's critical that. Tim has his full peer review completed at that time. Um, or, or that Tim necessarily needs to or should start his kind of full formal peer review process until. He attends that first meeting and hears our comments and um. Uses our direction in that meeting to focus his peer review. Does that, does that answer your question?
Um, mostly, I was looking for something simpler, like, you know, they have a square building and. He says it should be round, but. Not arguing about the details of siding or anything.
So you're saying that you're concerned.
Saying you want it to be round?
I want everything to be round.
You're saying there's concern that if peer review kind of gets started in a dialogue prior to hearing. The board's first reaction to the project, that it could. Throw things off potentially.
Uh, yeah, there's some of that in there, yeah. I mean, I just don't want it to get too far advanced. I want them to understand the, what they're going to have to do and, you know, the parameters of that and. The expectations, but I don't really want a full analysis of. The details yet. Man, I'd like to have the first meeting before that stuff happens.
And you, you don't, you don't want those full details or the full analysis of the details because you think you, that it's. More appropriate for the board to kind of get the first say and set, set the tone for. Kind of give the first reaction to the drawings, rather than the peer review doing so.
Yeah, both tone and then, you know, maybe the board's first reaction has some physical changes to layout or shape. And, you know, that would, that work would be undone.
Right, and so, okay, I think that's fair that we, we kind of would instruct Tim. You know, to that end, that basically, you know. We think you can go ahead. With a meeting, but that it really should be. Informational and serving to kind of um.
Review the process.
And review the process, interpret the regs kind of fairly strictly. And um, help them prepare for that initial meeting and that, you know, that. He, that the, the guy, the guideline or the guidance is that the board wants to set the tone for. The, the peer review process and so that won't commence in, you know, I guess in full until after that first. The opening of the hearing essentially.
Right. He's giving them general kind of knowledge and guidance, not commenting specifically on anything they're presenting to him.
Well, you know, we did address that in the first part, now, um, for some reason I can't, can you guys? See the um, screen now, the uh, rules, regulations?
Yes.
Okay, this part here, do we want to change this then? I mean, I thought. You know.
I don't know. What do you mean?
Oh, we're not going to vote on it tonight, right? So, but uh, maybe.
Oh, you mean the comment about initial feedback?
Yeah, we, we put, we just put that in.
Sometimes I think, like, for instance, I'm thinking back to when um, there was that donut shop that wanted to go into Guru Brothers, right?
Perfect example.
Perfect usage of the informal initial feedback, right? So I think having it in there, they can request it, we can always say, no, you're ready to go ahead, or yes, we would like to hear from you.
Yeah, that was like a out of left field kind of really, you know. They just needed to know if we would even remotely entertain the concept.
Guys, why didn't that happen?
It would have been a disaster.
Okay, but just the idea of it is so nice.
Oh, this, this was.
A drive-through into that intersection.
And drawing, babe.
Oh my God, I wanted to crawl into my little.
I, I, I kind of agree that like, when you're, when you're, when you want to test like a, like a real boundary breaking kind of idea. That seems an appropriate way to do so, but when the project is known, you know, it's already cleared all. I think it's cleared all the usage uh, hurdles and all that, um, I don't know, I, I just feel more strongly that it should just. Just move forward, you know.
I concur.
Based on, well, discussing, if you're talking about the, 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 the co-op, um. We had the, you know, the zoning board last night, I think Bill and and Jim were both there, but, but I don't, um. It's going to be a little while before they're ready to submit, I think, until they've got to get, there's some questions came up and um, so, but.
I honestly, I would prefer to. Have another, you know, myself or, you know, another person from the board attend a, an informal uh. Review outside of a meeting.
It's a good idea.
I'd rather that than get them in front of the board and in front of the public. I don't know, it just feels, if they, if they need something, then, you know, I, I feel like we could give them something, just not that.
I think that's a fair, that's a fair option.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Um, so, so I'll leave that in and I think um, if, in the meantime, if we can continue this out a little bit, we'll come up with some. We'll come up with a new process for the intake and I want to bring applications and we just haven't had any time at all to get to them. And I need you guys to vote on them as well.
So, taking a step back on this uh, uh, rules and regs. Is it, guys, do we feel like it's reasonable to digest this in, in one vote, or do we need to parse it out and kind of just. Vote on chunks as we, as we get through it and just put the chunks behind us. Uh, otherwise, I, I'm kind of losing the, the full scope of what we're trying to do.
As we went through it right now, as we were going through it now, like, everything we passed by is stuff I recall discussing, so I think we're probably. Closer not to being able to say yes to the whole schmear, right? But I defer to you if you want to break it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please, Jim.
Yes, I would like to uh, uh, discuss the peer review policy and procedures.
Certainly.
Okay, uh, I've done some work uh, and, and worked up a report. About that particular subject. I'd like to uh, uh, give that report to you now. And make it a part of minutes of tonight's meeting. I'll send a copy to Mr. Nempser when I'm done speaking, is that all right?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Fine, thank you very much. Okay, the planning board has discussed revisions and or changes that could be made to our rules and regs at several pre- previous meetings. Some of us have expressed concerns about the peer review procedures. A lot of the problems that have occurred between the developer and the reviewer on the 42 Summer Street and the 115 Main Street applications. I have researched how other planning boards and zoning boards deal with peer reviews in their cities and towns. In areas similar to our downtown overlay district. Pertaining to our use of peer reviews, our authorization specifies initiation of peer review. At the sole discretion of the planning board. Peer reviews are utilized in most instances to detect deformities or non-compliance within. Architectural or engineering design and also conformance to applicable codes, safety and proper usage. The planning board document authorizing architectural peer reviews contains no specified standards. And by its design, leaves open the entire process to subjective interpretation. By this planning board document, any project may be approved or denied based upon. The subjective interpretation and presentation of any peer review consultant. Architectural standards in a district should not be arbitrary and should be applied in a consistent manner to all applicants and developers. By some of the recent completed projects in the downtown overlay district, it is evident that these standards may not be applied consistently as to others. Peer reviews are paid by the applicant as dictated within the planning board rules and regs. There should be a choice of consultants presented to the applicant, not less than three, of which the planning board and applicant parties. Involved may then agree upon a selection. A design subject to peer review is submitted. And then acted upon by that chosen consultant, who then issues a finding and a report. It is then done. Peer review by concept should not be a process weapon to be utilized throughout the hearing and then to the end of a project. We have a very competent building inspector who will see to it that the project is completed correctly. The use of single-source peer review produces a monopoly situation without sympathy, sympathy to the pain and expenses. Laid upon the applicant. Care should be extended to select sources as consultants that do not carry predispositions, biases or conflicts of interest. Including but not limited to involvement in other potential projects and organized activities. Any person or board members harboring biases against any applicant should so state at the initiation of the hearing and invoice. Invo- recrusal. Even the appearances of conflicts of interest should be avoided with extreme diligence. I believe the most ethical efforts should be extended to encourage. Development and revitalization of our downtown overlay district. The applicant is making the investment, the town must not be hostile to development. Respect to the source of the funding. We need to encourage new projects and not put up on the cer- necessary roadblocks. Attention to our master plan should also be addressed. It is an up-to-date document. It is an up-to-date document that the town needs to implement as much as possible whenever an applicant comes for a board. I would like, if we could, Mr. Chairman, to, uh, request that any further discussion regarding the peer review section be tabled for tonight and rescheduled for our next meeting. This will give Mr. Nemser an opportunity to review the material and issue a staff report with possible recommendations. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, thank you for your research. Be glad to look closer at the letter. And if you have any other specific findings from other towns that you'd like to share. So the request has been made to table the topic. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to, I, I just, um, I need a little bit, I can't do it in two weeks. I can't have it. Because right now we're getting, next week is crazy and this week's crazy. But if you table it a month or so, I should be okay.
I'm a little confused as to what we're tabling and why. I mean, Bill Nemser, what are you being asked to produce in two plus weeks?
I think that the, uh, I don't know yet. That, that's what I want to, but in general.
Well, the matter that's being discussed is the rules and regs.
Yeah.
And that's, and, you know, our approach to peer review is, is a portion of that. So I would, I guess I would interpret it as the section of the rules and regs related to peer review is what we're being asked to table. We could keep discussing other matters, but Jim has brought some new information into the conversation that potentially, well, does, that does need to be reviewed by Bill and, you know, some kind of staff report or.
I mean, I, I did not see any new information in those statements. I saw new opinions voiced in those statements. But I didn't find any new information.
Inaccuracies, I think, right? The building inspector did not catch the summer that they then came and posthumously asked us to make major minor decisions on.
Well, let me, let me just ask.
It's not work.
Can I just ask Jim to clarify? It, you, you're, you provided a summary letter. Is, was there, is there additional information, uh, you know, that is part of um, what you plan to submit to Bill?
I think I can flush that out a bit with Bill, but, uh, the main, uh, purpose of this discussion on my part is to look at, uh, changing our rules and regs to provide a, uh, a, a, a choice of peer reviewers for both the applicant and the town to decide upon, so that we don't get stuck with, uh, somebody that, uh, is maybe, uh, their, their people, both applicant or peer reviewer have some problems with each other and that continues on and on and on through a project. I think if they both agree upon a choice of a peer reviewer, I think the, uh, the work would go much, much better and not be in conflict.
I mean, I've never worked on a project where you had a choice of a peer reviewer as a.
Right. And what if they just hold their foot down until they get someone who's going to do just what they want?
No, 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 you're wrong, Andrew. I'm saying the board chooses.
You're saying that developers aren't unreasonable? I think.
No.
The evidence.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that, uh, uh, giving a choice, uh, that the board chooses three different peer reviewers, uh, who, uh, that we would use and let the applicant choose among the three that, and, and then once he's decided that he likes, uh, that he agrees with a, in a peer review person, uh, then, uh, he's already, uh, halfway into the thing and we can't be throwing rocks at one another.
But let me just clarify one thing. My understanding of our process or our peer review, whatever policy to date, is that we have one pre-approved peer reviewer. That peer reviewer is not the only choice. The applicant has to consent to using that peer reviewer or else we have to go find a new. Now, I think maybe.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, didn't we give McDonald the option to, um, go with a different peer reviewer? It just sort of meant that we would have had to start the hearing all over again, or at least, excuse me, maybe not the hearing, but the, the peer review.
That's correct.
Process.
The way, the way it works under, uh, under the statute is, um, the board decides who they're going to have as a reviewer. Um, typically they put out an RFP, you get, you know, three or four, whatever it is. Um, and if an applicant has an issue with a reviewer, uh, whether it's, I think it's like, whether, you know, there's some sort of conflict, if there, there's a, um, a professional issue, and I guess like, I would think like it's something like, you know, we've had recently, maybe there's, maybe there's an issue that would make it more advantageous to everybody to have another peer reviewer. That option is, is there, but the burden is really on the applicant to prove why the the board's peer reviewer is not appropriate for this. Um, and I, I, I think we had it with Keene Avenue was the only time I can remember.
On the engineering end.
Are we mixing up the discussion of of peer review of, you know, different types of things versus what we have for our design regulations or recommendations, whatever you call that stuff, that's, oh, you know, I'll admit it's a little fuzzy. But, you know, the one that.
You can't have objective rules for a subjective thing.
I know, but I, I just think the discussion is really being focused on that document and not the overall, you know, peer review for, I don't know, everything else.
Right, yeah.
It's really architectural peer review versus engineering, for instance.
Well, but I don't know. I thought maybe, I thought the two of the, the two of them are are and should, to some degree, fall under the same process.
I, 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 I agree with you.
They just had a different job. They have a, they have a different, um, set of regulations that they need to, um, evaluate for.
And they have a different character, really.
And I think also to, to, you know, to describe, you know, that, well, I, I do think that engineering incorporates some level of subjectivity as well. Um, so I, I kind of.
It's just a different degree.
I, I kind of view them in a very similar way and sort of want to treat them the same way. I mean, they, they each have uh, a, a scope that they're being asked to review for. And they have rights that they can point to and, and their own professional, you know, standards of conduct that they can point to. So, so I'm kind of looking at them in the same way.
I have an idea that might move things, uh, uh, and might address everybody's concerns a little bit or get it kickstarted. So on November 12th, it just so happens, let me see here, uh, that we're having, uh, the, the, the citizen planner, uh, training courses are going, are they totally online now, obviously? But, and, and look what they have coming up on November 12th. And maybe that would be something, can you see that? Can you guys see that?
You have to scroll down, I think, or.
Uh, Bill, I think what you clicked on the link and it opened another screen, so you may have to choose to share the other screen of the listed courses.
Try it again.
Um, worry about learning Zoom. It's only been like eight months.
Come on now. Don't diss the planner. Can you see that now?
Hmm.
So, we will spring for everybody to go on this and we could also get, um, we could ask, um, our design reviewers to go to it. The other thing that's really cool about this, I think, I'm not positive about this course, but the other course is if we can't go on that date, I think they taped them and we can.
Um, I don't think they taped them, Bill. They may record them.
I'm going to get my horse.
I called them on that the other day.
Get off my back. Yes, they will, they will.
Well, I, you know, I can't say at the moment whether I can attend this. Uh, I generally support the idea of getting some, you know, other opinion and or not even opinion, but other, you know, actual informed interpretation of law of the law. Here, I think that, and including potentially leveraging some of our executive session time or something with Adam to, uh, um, just help maybe answer a couple of questions here.
Adam's not teaching this course, but he wrote this course. That, by the way, the, on, on, he wrote, he redid all the CBTC stuff.
And he can give us the Cliff's Notes. Um, no, I, I, I think attending this, some of us, you know, fully support it. I, I would like to. I don't know right now, but that'll work for me, but I, I, I will look into it.
Okay, I'll send it around tomorrow. If anybody wants to go, just let me know. I'll sign it up.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, and I, and I definitely support, um, incorporating the policies, you know, or get, getting, getting myself more informed on the policies and procedures of other towns, I think is very reasonable and something that we should do here because we don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Katie, let's ask Ralph tomorrow if he's going to have a, a record, a digital recording of this. Too, because I think everybody'd like that. If we could even just buy the whole shebang for everybody and then we could just have it.
Yeah.
On beta.
On the, I mean, on, on the most pressing matter that we have at hand regarding design review, the the one project that we know is coming before us soon, the co-op. Um, it sounds to me like there's an agreement as to how peer review can move forward with our current peer reviewer. So I'm not, I don't think this is an emergency that needs to be solved immediately. And I, I think that, you know, I'm glad to hear other opinions and hear other experiences from other towns and, and, you know, take some time and, and make the right decision on this.
Hey, Bill, what's the likelihood that, uh, the Bank America site's going to show up soon with the pot shop?
Well, um.
Because I mean, we'd have to have a different design reviewer for that one.
That's right. If we, if you wanted a design reviewer. Um, I guess it depends what they're going to do if they're, you're going to come before us. But if it's marijuana, they will come before us and then we, um.
What happened to the hotel?
Uh, it might not have design review though. I mean, if like, uh, what's his name? Olaf? We didn't do any design review, right? It was all just parking and.
Well, yeah, but we, yeah, that's right. But we all, because he didn't have a site. It wasn't for, you know, it was a, um, what do we do?
Yeah, it was just an interior, interior.
It was just used, right?
Like signage and frosted windows or whatever.
Yeah.
Which I'm assuming is going to be Bank of America too, because they're not going to, it's like a ancient, ancient structure. They're not going to be tearing. Well, maybe they will.
Yeah, but I mean, at Bank America, according to their presentation at Port Slakman, they were going to redo the rear with additional businesses.
Right. And they also.
That is different.
They, uh, I think if you're talking about the same one, I was at Bill the other night, they also were making, um, they were really into improvements in the area because they knew that's going to be part of the DOD obligation. But they, they got, it seemed to me they got it. You know, they understood that that was. So the thing that was really neat about that is could be an opportunity to kickstart any of our, um, initiatives in that area, but, but, uh, so far I haven't gotten anything from them, um, in application or anything like that. I believe that they're, the Slakman. I think I, they started, um, negotiating a host agreement or they're scheduled. Um, but I don't, that's all I know at the moment. I did meet with Adam Khan today, or Adam Khan, uh, Adam, um, Jesus, our Adam. And, um, he had a, quite an update. I'm going to put it in a, uh, uh, I want to put it in a little memo and I'll send around to all you guys. Um, what's up on it? He had, uh, it was a very good conversation. And he's made a lot of progress, I think. Um, probably not something we should get into now.
Yeah. So what do we do with this current hearing that we're in? I mean, my mind, I don't think we opened the hearing. They're, they're a whole lot better than they were. And we could spend our lifetime making them perfect.
The rules and regulations.
Yes.
I would like, for, for, my preference would be, um, if we punt it to give us, you, you could go over this, we could go over this stuff if you guys want to talk about it some more, I'm happy to. But I need time to get, um, I want to get the fees ready and, um, get the processes ready. So we're, and I just haven't had a time, time to really get up to, you know, to do it. But, um, I could use a little more time on it. But we could always have another hearing too, if you want. I mean, whatever you guys want. I'll make it work.
I don't think we ever opened a hearing here. I think we just started chatting.
I got right there.
Well, I, I guess from what I'm hearing, the general consensus was we shouldn't parse it out. We've got far enough that we can probably get all the way through whether it's maybe not tonight, but and, and one more hearing if we really put our minds to it. I give Bill, Bill a chance to, um, kind of firm up some of the, this research and information on the peer review. Um, so I'm, I'm comfortable just continuing one more time, knowing that also that, uh, the known current projects that we have on, under design review seem to be in a good place as is without, you know, a need for, uh, an urgent change. So I'm, I'm personally fine with that. But we do need to get this off of our agenda and move on. Um, so I, I think if we can make a concerted effort and a reasonable, you know, continuance duration, um, that we could really be prepared and just really aim to put this thing to bed the next time we hear it.
I understand.
No, it's not. I mean, it's, I don't, I think it's kind of a, it's fallen, you know, low down on the priority list for a number of reasons for a while. So it's, it's not. All right. It's just kind of the way it is.
Then maybe the thing to do, if we, anybody has any other, you know, maybe it's, we could take a peek at, you know, another time and, I mean, in between and let me know. And, um,
Bill, I'll be glad to work with you on that, uh, uh, in the interim here.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we can, um, make a proposal for that everybody likes.
So what about, uh, Tuesday, the 24th of November? It's about a month. We do have a meeting on that day, I believe. It's right before Thanksgiving.
Yeah. How about the eighth of December?
Okay.
I'd prefer the, I'm afraid, I'm just afraid with this. I mean, if you really do want, I can do it on the 24th, but I would prefer the eighth. But I will rise to the occasion.
No, no, I don't, we don't need that, honestly. I mean, if you're, I, I, I respect your opinion on the amount of time you need, Bill. That's, that's fine with me. I don't, I don't, I don't think we need to, you know, force this issue myself. So I'm comfortable with December eighth. Um, so I, I moved that we, uh, continue the hearing for the planning board rules and regulations to December eighth.
Second.
Thank you all in favor by voice. Aye.
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 Right. Did minutes, uh, any planner updates, Bill? Beyond.
He left.
Updates that we already have.
Just adjourned.
Uh, Katie, can you, uh, just tell them anything that I missed here? I'm putting this on the board.
Um, I'm not sure.
Tell.
What else there is?
Well, there's the housing production update meeting next week.
Oh, yeah, there's that.
So we, we, we've scheduled, um, a housing production meeting for November 18th. We have a, the, uh, Powder Mill Corridor redevelopment public meeting for our, our, that whole corridor that we've been working on with ABC is scheduled definitely December 3rd. Um, and, uh, the rest, I'm going to send you an update. I'm going to send you on, um, our litigation. I'm going to send you a little update on that. All, all, I think it's all positive stuff.
Uh, Bill, uh, I have a question for you if I can.
Yes.
Well, uh, we're gonna, uh, be, uh, looking at that corridor, uh, project. Doesn't the, uh, the two to six, uh, Powder Mill Road, uh, property. Doesn't the, uh, the two to six, uh, Powder Mill Road, uh, property come into that?
Indeed.
And we, we've told the, uh, we've mentioned to, um, NAPC, the folks doing the study, you know, we, we told them what's kind of going on right now with those sites. So I think they're taking that into consideration as well.
They've reached out, uh, to them. And they were, but, yeah, but that's all right. That's a good point, Jim. Yeah. And, um,
Are they reaching out to all the property owners along there or the major ones?
Yeah, we made a li, what we did is we had, um, we have an advisory group, you know, kind of, uh, and we, we put, we, we separated it by, you know, the larger, um, businesses and then the smaller ones um, that we could pretty much went along the whole corridor and asked them if they wanted to, to participate. Uh, we went to, um, uh, Deer Hedge and, um, went to, uh, where else? Well, I say went to, we zoomed, yeah, people zoomed with it. We didn't actually go.
Well, I'm just saying that the team has not talked to the housing authority.
Uh, the housing authority? Okay, that's a good one. Right. Okay, that's a good one, Joe.
I think, I think they, that's on their radar, though.
Because they went to it. I was there when they went. Actually, I don't know if they did. They, they, it was briefly, uh, but they know it's there. They, I don't know, because they met. I remember them just speaking with, um, oh, what's his name? Um, the head of the housing authority.
I think that was when we did our, the site tour, where we took them around.
We, and we.
But I remember putting on a list of, you know, important groups to contact. I believe we did indicate.
I'll send them a note. Yeah, it's, if, if I did, Don, I'll make a point. Bob Larkin, that's the name.
Okay. So we'll have, uh, I'm sure we'll, we'll have more on the curbing issue coming up soon. I imagine that there will be a modification for that coming in front of us in a couple of weeks.
I don't know.
Humped.
I'm not sure. They're, they're meeting, so, but. All right, Bill, and I sent that out, so we'll see about the housing authority. I'll get the, the lowdown. Done.
Okay, thanks.
You're still sharing, so we know.
Oh, okay.
Can you just, can you just, Bill, really?
One of these days, Bill, you're gonna have something up there.
Uh. Andrew's guitar.
Yeah.
Can, can you just, Bill, give a quick, um, rundown of what we have on the agendas for November 10th and November 24th at this point?
Uh, November 10th, we have, uh, Walter Erickson subdivision, which is no longer Zero Parker Street. Um, the, the official addresses came out today. Um, they have been working with Wayne about, um, with the, the pedestrian crossing. I haven't had a chance to catch up on that. We have, uh.
I think that's the only thing we have for the 10th, and I don't think we have anything scheduled right now for the 24th.
Correct, right.
I would gladly cancel that meeting if we, uh, had nothing by, I don't know, next meeting for sure.
The 24th, okay.
Yeah. Any objections?
None.
But we, you know, we've got, if the 10th is wide open, then we can slot people in there as needed, right?
Yeah, right.
As long as they show up relatively quickly.
Well, we're gonna go, we're all going to the movies, right, on the 10th? Or 12th, 12th, yeah, 12th.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Right.
The movie, like this movie we're all in right now?
Like, it's glamorous.
The story of designer view.
Nice. Uh, guys, I think that's it, huh?
Good meeting.
Move to adjourn.
What, has anyone heard from Chris in the last couple of weeks?
I have not.
We saw him on the HPP call last.
He's just on a long.
He was on it. That's right. He was on the housing production, so he probably.
All right, guys. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, everyone. We'll talk to you all soon.
Everyone. Bye bye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Phil, I'll go to that thing.
Huh?
I'll go to that thing.
Okay, I'm gonna send it out. It's not a thing. This is a, these are my colleagues putting this on. This is an event.
Saying with respect and excitement.
I'll send it around. All registered.
Natalie, I, I go along with you. The thing.
Yeah, the thing, the awesome sounding design thing.
Yeah. All right, guys. Thank you.
Good night.
Bye, everybody.